Welcome to the Monday, June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, meeting of the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School Committee. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will start with our reports and discussions, our students' representatives' report. Ms. DeBrao.
Hi, everyone. I feel empty without Izzy here, but my other half, no. Yeah, so I have to be here a last meeting. For us, I don't really know. So the seniors are done. They had a great graduation. We just finished up our finals today. They started last Wednesday, so today was our last one. And then tomorrow is our last day, and we have step-up day, so everyone's going to their classes to kind of preview it for next year. And then some exciting new updates for the D Y Community Garden. We planted today, and I'm so excited that this project has like, actually, things are growing there, you know, because, yeah, I'm so excited about it. Anyways, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm sure everyone's counting down their last three hours. I am not, but I'm excited. Next, we have the discussion on the Station Avenue School Gymnasium dedication in memoriam of Patricia Watson.
So the committees had the first reading two meetings ago now, where you were presented with the information from the smaller committee of individuals that put the original petition together. The school committees had public comment, and now in the third meeting, you have the recommendation on the agenda from the superintendent recommending that you make a motion. The motion's there for you all in on the agenda. And so the action is now in front of you as a committee to determine what it is you'd like to do, whether you'd like to move forward with the naming or not.
I would like to, I would like to make the motion to approve the dedication of the Station Avenue Elementary School's gymnasium in memoriam of former educator Patricia Watson and to name the space the Patricia Ann Watson Gymnasium.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing, Ms. Landers.
I just want to thank everyone who worked so hard to put together this proposal and who dedicated so much time to honoring a woman who clearly had a huge impact on all of you and her students. So thank you for putting this together and bringing it to us. It's really special.
Thank you, Ms. Landers. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations. Next, we have a discussion on a rate increase for technology support stipend for school committee meetings.
So as folks may or may not know on the committee, you're recorded every eve, every time you're here, and that's also put out live on YouTube. And there is setup and breakdown that happens every night for the meetings, as well as making sure that it goes out and all the sound, et cetera, works. And there is compensation that goes along with that in order for the person, for the person that does that and sets it up. You also used to be a separate equal stipend that went for the, on top of the executive assistants role. But again, we restructured that. It's a separate stipend now that supports the school committee. And in doing some history and digging back and looking at this particular meeting rate, the meeting rate hasn't changed in years. You know, as we increased compensation for other things, we haven't increased this compensation in a very long time. So in sort of looking through across compensations that we've had, you know, across all of our compensation, really felt like this was one that needed to be addressed. So just looking for a three percent, probably should be more, but just starting with a simple three percent increase to the per-meeting rate from the committee for the person who comes every day, or every meeting, to support the meetings.
All right, so I will make the motion to approve a rate increase of three percent for the current stipend of one hundred fifty dollars per meeting for the technology support of these school committee meetings.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Landers.
Three percent hardly seems like enough. And I know you said it's a start, so I hope that we can continue looking at this and budget accordingly. You know, certainly, obviously, the setup takes a long time before the meeting, and the breakdown takes a lot of time after the meeting. And when we have sometimes three-hour meetings, you know, they're dedicating a whole, you know, we all do it because we're, you know, we know that we have this volunteer commitment, but, you know, for someone to come in on an evening like this away from their family, that's a lot to do for one hundred and fifty plus three percent. So I hope we can budget more in the future for this role, please.
Yeah, I think, I know we've had some discussions around similar like substitutes. We sort of don't do nothing for a while, then we're kind of behind. So I think this falls in that similar, where I think we'd be better off if we just got into a annual COLA increase for positions like this. So I'd like to get into that habit.
Mr. Glenn.
Just two questions. One in regards to that. So is there a reason why we set three percent, or was we just thought that was a fair amount to start, or?
Yeah, and it's in line with most of our other contractual increases, so just looking for something that was, looking for a number that was in line with where we are with other places.
And is this, I only recently realized the, you know, a separate line item on the school committee. Does this come under the school committee line item in the budget, or?
No, it does not come from there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. You're not asked, please.
Never gets.
I see the camera waving. The next is discussion of the M E S Building Committee Recording Secretary job description.
So the committee, the school committee has a job description in their packet. So as you are all aware, the school committee voted several meetings ago to authorize the creation of the M E Small Building Committee. The initial version of that building committee has been formed. They have yet to meet. They, the chair of the building committee, who is also the chair of the school committee, and I met recently to discuss getting the first meeting up and running. But once that committee and the building project gets going in earnest, that meeting's gonna, or that committee will meet regularly. And just like this committee, it will need to have minutes generated. It will need to be organized for as far as scheduling. It will need to have public meeting notices, et cetera, et cetera, right? Just, just like this board needs. So we'll need someone to do all of that. So we're looking to have the committee to authorize the creation of a recording secretary for that, for that, for the building committee, so and authorizing the superintendent to post for that position and get somebody into that role. We're looking to have the first meeting probably by the third meeting, third week in July. And you'll see the duty is described, which is large, similar to what the job does for the school committee with some differences and, but largely the same. And then you'll notice in the compensation section, you'll notice two rates, one in black, one in red. That was just largely pending upon how you voted on the last motion. The red would be the rate I would anticipate to align it with the same meeting rate for the technology position. So that would be the new rate that you just approved. And I think that's it. I'm happy to take any questions through the chair that you may have.
Guess we could take a motion first and then see if there's any discussion or questions, if someone wants to make a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move to approve the proposed job description for the M E S Building Committee Recording Secretary as presented.
Perfect. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Glenn.
It'll go generally posted internally, but I do know of at least one person who's expressed potential interest.
Mr. New.
Could you explain to me the one fifty-four fifty in red?
Yeah, so that, so the rate would have been commensurate with the one fifty per meeting, but then you all just voted a three percent increase, so that's a three percent increase to the one fifty per meeting.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other discussion or questions, all those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? I'll surpass you, Ashley. Thank you. Next is E D Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District Treasurer.
All right, so there's two things for the committee to consider here. So this has been a, an ongoing conversation that we've been having around the shift in the treasurer position. So again, just for the sake of the public, for anybody who hasn't been following along, the, the way the treasurer role has operated in Dennis Yarmouth for a long time is the treasurer position has sat in, with a school committee member, that school committee member has been bonded, but largely hasn't done many of the functions of the treasurer. And that functionality has sat in an assistant treasurer role in the business office at the, at central office, along with many other administrative assistant functions. Three months-ish ago at this point, our, the assistant treasurer retired, and we were sort of left in a little bit of a pinch. And, but also also created an opportunity to reorganize moving forward. Several other districts, actually pretty much every other district that operates like a region. So whether they're regional school districts, or for example, Cape Cod Tech operates fiscally similarly to us, right? They hold money from N S S towns in the same way that we do. They have a separate treasurer function, separate from your business administrator. And that treasurer is the one who transfers your funds, is the one who manages your money, separate from the business administrator. The business administrator manages the budget, oversees the warrant, the generation of the warrant, oversees the purchase order process, you know, your business contracts, et cetera. But the actual movement of money in order to cash the, or pay the bills is done by the treasurer. Is this proper separation of duties, so that essentially you can't write a check to yourself and be able to move the funds in order to pay it. And it's all by statute. Again, we've been through all this as, in, in leading up to today. And so the, the school committee has approved previously the job description for the treasurer, the posting of that job description. And so today, what I'm asking for is for two motions. One would be after the posting of the job description and an interview process. When we've, and some going back and forth on a contract, we're all ready. But this is one of the positions that the school committee has to appoint, because the treasurer does reports to the superintendent, but works for the school committee, because again, one of your major functions is to oversee the fiscal health of the district, right? So you do have to appoint the treasurer position. So is to appoint Mr. John Ferris to be our first treasurer in this new role. And then the second motion would be to officially, as of July one, relieve Ms. Landers of the burden that she's been carrying for the last several months and move this, officially move this duty from a school committee member to this job description that, that you have previously approved.
The only question I have, should the second motion be first, followed by the first motion? Should, do we have to real? I would say that we'd have to.
I did hem and haw about which to put first.
I think we'd have to approve transferring the role and then approve appointing a role. Okay. That's all I'm going to ask of whoever decide, if anyone wants to make any of those motions. Okay. Make the second one out.
I move to transfer the role of the treasurer from the school committee to the treasurer job description that was approved on May fifth, two thousand and twenty-five by the school committee, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussions or questions on this one? Seeing none, do we need a roll call vote for the appointment, or? We can, we can do a roll call vote for that one. We'll start with Mr. Glenn.
Aye.
Mr. New. Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Landers. Ms. Bemis.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Okay, there's a second motion.
I move to appoint Mr. John Ferris to the position of treasurer.
We have a motion and a second. Discussions or questions? Ms. Landers.
Should we have an assistant treasurer? What's the protocol if, John, you're unavailable for something? Like who will be the second person on the bank and on the bond and all that stuff?
So, so we have discussed a couple of things. So one, the way we can set it up is that John can do most of it remotely. And we've set it up for him to be able to do remote work, so he doesn't have to physically be able to be in the office on some days. Second bit is we will set up the, in an emergency, the superintendent can access the bank if needed. And then, and then we've also discussed options for the accountant to be able to be a backup as a third layer in like an extreme emergency. But those are the scenarios that we've discussed. And then, again, having somebody in the role, we'll be able to workshop all of this moving forward, like especially once he'll be able to focus on just that. We'll be able to, so if we do have to come back to the committee at some point forward and say, you know, we, now that we've been doing this for six months, here's what we think is the best option going forward. But having an assistant treasurer, the functionality there, as we've spent some time, we don't believe many of the functions that were sitting in that job, we need to keep there. It's a unnecessary extra human capital that we don't need to bring an extra person on to do many of the functions that were there. Now, we've been able already to redistribute them. Quite frankly, I, I know you've been moving the money, but everything that's been done to do all that, we've been able to do, quite frankly, by redistributing some of the work inside the office. John's been doing two jobs part-time. I think having a full-time business administrator on, and then John focusing just on the treasury functions, I, we're pretty confident that we'll be okay.
Right. I mean, I think we certainly never expected to end up in the situation that we did this past year, so you never know, right? So if you do need to come back to the committee and if it makes sense to have someone on the committee as an assistant treasurer as sort of backup again, you know, I know, now I know how to do all this. So not that I love doing it, but I'm, I'm happy to, you know, stay on since I'm already on the accounts and I'm bonded and all that. So if it makes sense.
Yep.
To not have a full other employee in the office as assistant treasurer, but somebody who can just do the transfers as needed. Because I know we like to separate those duties as much as possible. So just a thought.
Yeah.
Can I pretend I don't see your arm? I see your arm.
You know what happens if you can't, don't see me, you hear me. I just had a question, kind of dovetailing off of what Jenny was saying, was because we do have that kind of fiduciary duty as a school committee, would you just be doing a report back to us on treasurer, like a treasurer's report? Or it might perform a role for the assistant treasurer to, you know, report back to us?
Yeah. So, and to be clear, so like you're still going to have all the same warrant, you know, the signing. So that whole process is not going to change, right? So the committee still has to sign off on all the districts purchasing as part of the warrant process. And, and yes, a process that I would like to set up with the committee, a process that you haven't had up until now, would be quarterly treasury reports. So that would align with, you know, quarterly, or maybe not align with, maybe they'd be, you know, you'd have one, one week and then one the other week. Because that'd be a lot of, probably staring at the screen a little bit too much. But, you know, you'd get a quarterly budget, budget report, and then a quarterly treasury report. Because they are two different things, you know, where's the budget standing, and then where does your money stand? Because those two things aren't exactly the same thing.
So I, I don't, I, I think it's a good idea to have the assistant treasurer. If, if we're not a voice adverse to it, should, could we make a motion to do that now? Or it'd be better to wait?
I would say we will, we'll wait on that. Because even, even in the role that Jenny has as treasurer, I've had in the past, we've never actually did any presentations. So really have never had this. So if we're looking to add something already, we can look to see once Mr. Ferris is in the position and we have the, our new business manager, we can look at seeing about that. So we'll look to maybe add that to a future agenda.
So if you can't see, I'm nodding in agreement with you.
Any other questions? Okay. So we'll do a roll call vote for the second motion. Mr. Glenn.
Aye.
Mr. New.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Landers.
Yes.
Ms. Bemis.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Congratulations. We're excited for you to continue with us.
The crowd clapped.
Next, we have subcommittee representatives liaison report, school committee liaison to select board. Anything from the town of Dennis to add?
Yes.
Tomorrow night at the Dennis Select Board meeting, which starts at 4 o'clock, the select board will be issuing a proclamation to our retiring principal, Kevin Depin.
Excellent. I know we had, I know we had some events last week, which was great to see. And anything from the town of Yarmouth? Mr. Glenn. I believe they do have a special meeting, not the select board, but the town of Yarmouth Libraries has a meeting at 6:00 PM to discuss the location of a new library. So I know that is at Town Hall in the meeting hearing room tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Those of you who did not get a robocall as of yet, should see it shortly. Superintendent's report.
All right. So just a couple of recognitions. So first, I just want to, actually just running off of the sandwich, I mean, not sandwich, the Dennis Select Board meeting, might have been the last one, or maybe there's already been one in between. But one of our students presented at a previous select board meeting, Ella Contonio, an eighth grade student, was presenting her classes. So it was representative of her, the work her whole class had done. But a brave young eighth grader got up in front of the select board and presented their civics project, civics action project on, they were that class, and actually several classes at the high school. I thought it was interesting when I went to the civics action day at the high school. Several classes presented on the benefit of having rec centers in the, in the community. So, so she was there presenting. She had been invited by one of the select board members to come and present. She was there with, with her teacher, Kristen Williams, Tristan Williams, and they were there to present. But Ella did the presenting. So her teacher just introduced her, and then she took it from there. And she did a great job presenting to the select board, who was very receptive to her. So just, just a quick shout out. It's just another example of some of the great stuff that our kids are doing in the community in a wide variety of ways. And then the second thing that I just wanted to recognize was during senior week, so two weeks ago already now, you know, had the senior awards night, the Thursday before graduation. And it's always just a mind-blowing number. But for folks that weren't aware, gave out, the, the high school staff gives out, one of the main things that happens at awards night is the giving out of scholarships to students. And the total number of scholarships that were given out was over $609,000 in scholarships. It's just a huge number. It's just, you know, I say here every night, every school committee meeting about the generosity of the community for all the different donations that come through the, the committee. And then there's that, right? So on top of all those, there's, was $609,000 that was given to Dennis and Yarmouth students to help support their furthering of their education. So it was, and service, right? So some of it was for students that were going on to military service. So it wasn't just college scholarships. It's just, it was just, again, when you, when you hear the final number at the end, I mean, you can see all the kids, and you just, you can start to get a sort of mental tally that's going in your head. But after a while, you just start to lose track. And when you hear that final number, it's just absolutely phenomenal. So again, just a huge thank you, because without the support of the community, obviously you don't get to that number. All right, a couple of updates. So first, just the field construction update. If, again, if people have been able to drive by, you can see the progress that's going on out there. The lower field is completely stripped at this point. The turf's off both fields. The lower field's completely stripped down to the base layer, or down to the, they've taken out all the subbase material. So it's ready to bring the new material in. Testing continues at each stage as they take this, take the material out. As, as the committee knows, we're in dispute over the original build. So we've had engineers from a couple, from our current designer, plus from the, the team that helped the committee through the, the original dispute, or has been helping the committee through the dispute, has been on-site testing as each layer has come off to help us in our case with the dispute. And this week, they'll start milling. So they'll, then the work will begin in earnest in the upper field. They'll mill the track down to the, that subbase material, and they'll take all the subbase out of the upper track, upper, yeah, the upper field. And then new materials start coming in. They'll, we had a meeting on Friday with pretty much everybody out on the field. It was, was actually a nice day. And they're gonna, they'll create a, like a 20 yard by 20 yard test area, and they'll lay the material out before, and they'll, they'll run some filtration tests on it before they actually put it out in scale across the, the field. So that'll be another test of the new material when the new material comes in. So again, a lot of extra due diligence going in to make sure that we don't find ourselves in any type of a place where we found ourselves before. And then the new materials start rolling in, and then carpet, and you know, the, some tweaks to the design going as far as aesthetics going. So like some higher fence posting, a backstop, some other, and a flagpole that apparently never got put in when it was supposed to get put in in the first place. So just some, some, some things that are getting done, and getting done right the first time. Next update is the Ken Jenks Auditorium. So we've had a lease for a community group for the last year. We had a meeting with that group this week, maybe last week. Oh, it couldn't have been this week because today's only Monday. So it was last week. And their current construction project is still ongoing. And so they're not, so we were going to renew the lease contract for approximately another six months. And we'll, gonna put a clause in the contract requiring 60 days' notice to terminate the contract for, for them. And that works to our advantage in, one, knowing that we have the steady income for that 60 days, and two, giving us 60 days' notice when we can start to book other folks coming in. And for us, it's a, a 30-day notice wasn't, just wasn't enough time. Because let's say, you know, the group was ready to be done on December 30th, but didn't notify us until December 1st, then there's a good chance we would miss opening it up to another group that might want to use it in July, June, January 15th. Because there's just not enough window for a group to say, yeah, we need an auditorium that big. That's, they're not going to be planning that in short of a window, you know, another outside, let's say, music performance group, or a, you know, whatever. So 60 days, we felt like gave us enough window to know we could count on it, plus we could be able to notify maybe another group that yes, they're going to be gone, and, and we can start to book other groups. Because it has been, and it's given us a good little model on what, what that space can be from a revenue generation standpoint, and has allowed us to do some good things across the different district, allow us to tackle several projects that we, quite frankly, wouldn't have been able to get to from a facility standpoint if we hadn't had the, the revenue. And we've been able to work, they've been, this particular group's been a good partner in working with us to both ensure that we got school projects done, like as far as the performances, et cetera, et cetera. And again, created revenue-generating piece for the district. So like, you know, as we think forward to these new fields coming online, it's going to be another opportunity for the district to generate some revenue to then, again, tackle some of the things from a facilities and ground standpoint that maybe have been sitting on the back burner as a district. And it's giving us a model and sort of a test case for how we might be able to do some things like that moving forward. Through the chair.
Mr. New.
Thank you. So, first question is, has central office or the scheduling individual, whoever, program, has it taken into account performances and rehearsals that have been booked by the existing department here?
Yes.
Okay. Secondly, has there been a follow-up meeting with the instructors in the music department as to adherence to the existing contract?
That would go through the principals. So they, the principals are the ones who have the regular contact, contact with the, with the staff in the building.
Okay. And so if those performances are scheduled, who has priority now?
The, the building has priority.
Okay. And?
And we've been working throughout the year. We've already, you know, as this has gone, the, the church has been very amenable to working with, with our staff.
Good. And is there thought to increasing the fee, since it's another contract in another year?
At this time, no. If we're going to extend any further, but it's just another six months. So no, we feel like we've had a pretty good working relationship with the group, and there isn't a need to increase the fee at this time.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Bemis.
So as you looked for a new lease agreement, do you see that our policy is still in concert with the terms of the lease agreement?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
There's a policy on using the space?
Yeah. Yes.
Does it still work out to our advantage, or does that need to be looked at?
I, I don't think there's anything in the policy that's restrictive, but it's a good, probably a good thing to take another look at. But I think the policy is supportive of the, the actual implementation, yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yeah. So I was going to ask about the policies, but I, I also, if that applies to the fields and advertising, you know, a lot of fields have local advertisers, might be a good revenue source. So that might be something you want to look at also. And not to betray any trust or contract, but just the total revenue that we get from them, if you can.
Yeah, I can follow up with that information. I don't have it off the top of my.
Yeah, that's okay. I didn't expect it. And in regards to the fields and the communications, you know, my fear is, and I've already seen it, but I'm sure other people have too, that, you know, people see the digging up, they see things, and then they run with the rumor control. And I'm just wondering if we're doing any, I mean, obviously, we just spoke about it here, but if we have a separate page for information that we can give out, I mean, I know there's legal issues, but just giving out the information that we gave out tonight, if there's a place to point people at, to, might be an idea, or you know, communications director or whatever. But I just wanted to know where I can point people to where they can be pointed to.
Then maybe I'll step in and say, maybe we need to do another, you know, public message on our Facebook page or communication out, again, maybe at the end of the year at some point, maybe as more people drive by and see the construction, the bigger construction cup.
Yeah.
Again, it's not necessarily for, it's for both. It's for, you know, the parents, but it's also for the, to Joe's point of the community members that are not aware of what's going on. I know your communications to the, the parents are, is clear, but there's many people, you know, the taxpayers or the summer taxpayers that, you know, wonder what's happening at a brand-new school. So.
Yeah.
Maybe we can work on some type of communication again, that we can broadcast publicly. It'd be great.
Yeah, I can do, because we've done a couple press releases. It hasn't been picked up by like the paper. The, like the ME Small press release was picked up, and that ended up being a, you know, a story in the paper. But the idea of maybe putting something on the website, and I had, and at that meeting that I mentioned, we did have a conversation with PMA, you know, they could, they said they could do like a progress update. So maybe, maybe we can take that and turn that into some type of a, a bit on the, the website that we could, we could push people towards. And, and we're always looking for summer content for the, for the social media, because it's like, the kids are gone. So it's, you know, how do we, how do we generate content? So that actually could maybe be something that we could drive to and push for content. So.
Ms. Landers.
And maybe a letter just to each select board, like with the same content?
Yeah. All right. Then, let's see. So Director of Multilingual Learner Instruction Update. So just to update the committee, we started with a round of, first round, we had five candidates that were initially brought in for the interview for the position. There was the, the initial interview team was made up of a group of leaders, teachers. We had our community, communications and community relations coordinator as a part of that initial interview team. That initial interview generated three finalists who moved on. The three finalists came in for about a half-day each. Then they, the half-day interviews led to, or were comprised of a meeting with principals, central office leaders, one-on-ones with me. And then, and they had a, each person had to do a performance task related to, essentially like I gave them a task around entry and what their entry might look like. I gave them some specific things that I was looking for. And then after doing some reference digging, I'm happy to announce that Ms. Catherine Watts signed a contract to take on the new role as our new multilingual learner role. She's coming to us from the Munson Public Schools, where she's been an assistant principal, a principal, an assistant soup for curriculum and instruction, as well as an EL director. And she actually had a very short stint as an acting superintendent. And she comes with a strong resume of effective leadership. References spoke very highly of her ability to lead, her ability to do district-level leadership, which was something that really resonated with me. which was something that really resonated with me, strong understanding of the needs of English learners and the work that needs to get done here. I'm very excited and we're excited to have her as part of the leadership team. So she'll start on July 1, and we're excited to bring her in as a part of the team. And then last but not least, graduation near end. Since the last meeting, we had a wonderful graduation ceremony. And it's often, sometimes, or I shouldn't say often, but sometimes it can definitely feel as if graduation is like a high school ceremony. But the truth is, it's really takes the entire district. And then our entire district is responsible for getting those graduates across the stage. It takes 13 years, or when if we have preschoolers, 15 years to get them, get them to that age, or if we have them from preschool, to get, get them all the way across that stage. I know for me personally, it was really, it's a really proud moment to sit there and watch each of the graduates. You know, they walk right across my line of sight. And I get to see them walk up the little ramp, stand there and pause for a minute until their name gets called and you just, like, see their face light up as they walk across the stage and then, you know, shake Principal Bennett's hand and then get their picture taken and move off. So it's right, and I see that, you know, 100, roughly 180 times. So it was just, it's just a really kind of powerful moment over and over and over and over again for me. And, you know, and everybody's cheering from them and it's, it's all just coming like right at me as I'm sitting there. It's just really a powerful experience for me to be able to, and a privilege for me to be able to take part of. And I'm really honored to be able to take part of it. Tomorrow's the last day of school, as has already been mentioned, for our students. It's always a bittersweet time for me. You know, I know the district needs some time to reset. It's also time for leadership and other folks to get some strategic work done. And it's time for us to clean and, and really get the school ready for the fall. But a school system is not a school system without the kids, so, you know, that, that's the sort of bitter part of it. But it won't be long before, I know I personally and most of us will be long, and to have the kids and the energy back in the school system. But for now, we'll focus on getting a little bit of rest. And I know the leadership team, right, early July, will be updating the, the strategic plan. We'll be getting our next year's action plan together. And then we've got, like I mentioned, we've got a lot of projects ongoing across the district this year. Like, as far as projects that we can only really get done when the kids aren't here. So we're like, the Ezra Baker's getting its first really good, deep, deep cleaning that it's had in a while because we're not having the summer extended school year program there this year. Plus, we're removing all the remaining carpet in the basement, doing some tile replacement in some areas upstairs in that building. We're doing a fairly comprehensive paint work at ME Small in, in the main foyer areas. S.E.A.'s, or Station Ave's getting a major playground upgrade thanks to the couple of capital improvement funds from the Town of Yarmouth. It's also getting some floor tile replacement and some paint work. And Saint Central Offices getting some reorganization work done to make us operate a little bit more efficiently and effectively. So a lot of work's happening, all in a very short window of time. The Facilities and Grounds Team is going to be leading the charge and doing yeoman's work in order to make all that happen. We're very grateful for their, their work. I know a lot of, a lot of people, when I talk to them, they just assume everybody is not around in the summertime, but there's, are a lot of people here year-round who ensure that the school system's ready to go in, in the fall. So I'm very thankful for all those people to make sure that we are ready to go when the kids come back in early September and the staff comes back in late August. And that is it for me.
Thank you. Next, we have School Committee Business. The first is a draft version one of the 2026, 2027 school calendar.
Excuse me.
Thing to notice on this is that we, Labor Day falls late versus early this year. So it looks like this shows the first day of school as Wednesday, September 9th, and the last day without snow days as Tuesday, June 22nd. What I do notice different on here is the difference in half-days between the high school versus the K to 7. I'm assuming because of, they don't do parent-teacher conferences. And then blue days is half-days for everyone, so very different than previous ones. But I'll open up, anyone, any questions or any comments that you have, Dr. Smith? I know I just briefly looked at it and said all those things.
Yeah, so just for, for the context, you know, the chair already, already mentioned the, so a couple of year, last year or the year before, the, the committee, to try to abbreviate the calendar a little bit, added the two half-days for staff on the Good Friday, or for everybody, on the Good Friday and the day before Thanksgiving. But I have also heard from members of the committee, as well as from the community, about the half-days for parent-teacher conference, that we only do parent-teacher conferences from K to 7. And that is contractual, right? So then if we're only doing parent-teacher conferences K to 7, then why are we dismissing K to 12? So in working with the bus company this year, we were able, my, my wonder was, well, can we make it work with the transportation company? And I got confirmation this year from the transportation company that we can make it work. So instead of making the change for next year, pushing it out one, one year, just to, because we, the committee's already settled next year's calendar. So giving everybody one more year to adjust would be the first time we would just do a K to 7 dismissal because that's all we have the parent-teacher conferences at is K to 7. We'd be differentiationating those two items. And I believe that was the only change we made, right? Yeah.
And then what's the reason for the half-day for the high school on January 27th?
That's, that is in the contract. We just haven't never had it on the calendar before, but it, like, it happened this year. It'll happen every year. There's a half-day in the teacher's contract for the high school only at mid-terms. Yeah, it's in the collective bargaining agreement.
Yeah, I feel like I've seen parents say it was a half-day and no one believed it because it wasn't on the calendar.
Yeah.
But I don't have a kid in high school.
So it's just acknowledging it on the calendar.
Ms. Landers.
I think there are more half-days at the high schools that are actually missing from this. Or, I mean, so.
Oh, I guess it would be like the midterm or the, I mean, the.
I feel like Jacob had a bunch of half-days this year that I didn't know about because they weren't on this calendar. And everyone's like, "Oh, yes, the last day of the term, it's a half-day." And then this week, they had half-days, last week, Thursday, Friday, and today. So if we could add all the high school half-days onto this, it would help the parents.
Yeah, this is version one, so this is the time to ask all the questions.
Yep.
So that Sarah can.
Yep.
Work on it. And we get to version two and then get to a final.
And then my other question was about professional development. So we've got four days at the beginning of the year, right? And then one day in October. So it's all front-loaded. And I know that years ago, we, we made an effort to front-load a few days at the beginning of the year on purpose, but I'm just wondering, you know, is there any interest in future years? Or is there benefit to moving some of these professional days to later in the year, halfway through the year? Or is there enough opportunities for that without those?
So, again, I have to go back and reread the specifics in the contract, but my understanding is the contract states that, for the teachers, that we can't start before the Wednesday after Memorial, I mean, Labor Day. And then, so then if we have to put the, if we put the professional days later in the year, then we just are going to push the calendar date later. Yeah.
Any other questions or input? Mr. Glenn. Mr. Martin's leading forward, so therefore I can't see your arm. I didn't say that.
Get him a flag.
Just off of that, so you said the Wednesday before, we couldn't, we couldn't start full-day school, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, I forget exactly what the language, it says, it's something about the professional days and one of them has to happen the Tuesday after Labor Day, I think, is that's how it hap, that's how it's structured. So that, that then pushes the first day of work to be the, the Wednesday after.
But here you have the three, one, two, and three is.
Right, so, so, so you could put the other ones later. But so that, so then let's say, so it's, say you take the, the one from September 2nd and just randomly, I don't pick a date. Let's just say you made it December 9th. Then that's going to take your last day of school and make it the 23rd. You can move another one, it's going to make your last day of school the 24th. So it just, the, if you move them to another time in the year after the first day of school, it just moves the last day of school later and later and later. Which, in this particular year, because Labor Day is so late, it's already then just pushing the calendar. And they, and one thing we've also done here is this date is reflective of the 180th day of school, not the 185th day of school. It's because that always confuses people, so we've just stopped that practice. We'll just add the days when we have snow, if and when we have snow days. Yeah.
A lot of people are really used to knowing that whatever it says last day on here is with five scho, snow days built in, so we'll definitely want to make sure that we highlight for folks that that is.
The last day.
Don't deduct five days from this.
Any other questions or comments for version one? Mr. New.
Again, revisiting the professional days. Is the 9th the weekend of holiday weekend?
Yes. And that's the All Cape Day.
That's from the collaborative?
Yes.
That's very early.
It's al, it's almost always on that hol, the Friday of that holiday weekend.
Really?
Yeah, unless it's the, the presidential election year, then they tend to put it on the voting day for.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then all the half-days, we've tried as best we could to avoid MCAS testing windows and everything. You know, every year, we try to, the imperfect science of trying to avoid all the major. And we've probably missed something, but we've tried.
Okay, we'll have an opportunity to look at it again.
I mean, the 1.5 early releases, sorry, not the half-days, the early releases. Yeah.
And best of our knowledge, we don't have any difference in start times. Start times aren't on here, so this.
Correct. Yes.
So we don't have to worry about that now. Okay. So you have plenty of time. Sarah will update the half-days. We'll verify with Ms. Bennett and we'll verify all those things that those of us who don't have, anyone in high school don't know about until their kid's home and tells us they had a half-day. And we don't believe them because we approve the calendar and it's not on there. I got some time to worry about that. So with that. Perfect, thank you. And then next, we have the consent agenda. All of you should have attached in the. Yeah. Is the calen, consent agenda should be the subcommittee, subcommittee assignments. So we should have all of that on there. And then the, so we all have, so, can all see that? If you have any questions about that, that's going to be on the calendar one. It's okay. Bills requisitions and payroll was passed out. Calendars, so we have the, a couple calendars. One of them is going to be the June calendar, which, again, the last day of school will be tomorrow. And then we will have, in July, we'll have our meeting on July 7th, our workshop at 5:00 P.M. And then also is a schedule of dates for 2025, 2026, starting in September. So all the dates are there. We've tried to avoid as much stuff as we could, but all the dates are there and we will post those shortly on our website, as well as notify the towns. Mr. Glenn.
It was funny because Glenn's head wasn't in the way when John was talking.
I have longer arms. No, my arms are longer.
I got your trick. Now I lost what I was going to add. What were we just talking about?
Calendar dates for, the meeting dates for 25.
I don't know, it must not have been important, sorry.
I'm not telling you that someone told me they skipped, made sure they looked at all holidays in September, but we will look at that one.
Oh, I know what it was. The, do we have a separate workshop on our goals or where do we fit that in? I thought we did a separate workshop on school committee goals.
We'll, we'll have the agendas for the two workshops sent out.
Okay. No, I just didn't know if it was included in the other workshop or whatever, but, okay. I'm just glad I remembered it.
Tomas, I'm looking at the subcommittee assignments and there's probably a method to your madness in these appointments and maybe you'll speak to us individually. I just wanted, I mean, it looks a little uneven.
I think it's because we took out several things and added a couple, so I think.
Glenn has five committee assignments. Phil has one. John New has one. And maybe people aren't, maybe there's reasons for that. I just want to flag, this seems, I've got three, I think, and I'm okay with that.
I will, I will relook because.
But yeah, I think it's a little.
The original list had three more items on there and that's probably where the math did not balance out.
Okay.
And if you have a chance to look at them, you know, as long as we're on the committee, I'd like to sort of open myself to new opportunities and those existing. I don't know how anybody else feels, but I've done those since I've been on the committee and this is my fourth year, so I, I'm open and interested in trying something else.
Okay. So we'll, we'll table this then for the subcommittee. The other issue was that certain people are ineligible to be in some committees, but I think we removed all those from this list, so.
Because of conflicts of interest.
Correct.
Understood.
I think that was the original one. But some of these are, have already been, the top first two have already been appointed positions. So I'll, I'll look at the remainder.
Okay.
And we can rediscuss. Luckily, no one has to do anything as of yet. So we'll review that. Thank you for the feedback. And then we'll review the Monday, September 22nd because it does fall over a holiday. So we'll, we'll look to see what's available based on open houses and stuff for the week before, the week after. That's why we do this in front of seven people. Anything else that was noticed?
Yeah, I mean, it's all draft, none of these, yeah.
Perfect. So we'll get that all cleaned up. There was nothing else on the consent agenda. I saw nothing else, okay. And public comment in the, anyone in the comment that would like to say anything in the social distancing seating that someone did today, seeing none. That's all we have.
Motion to adjourn.
We have motion second. All those in favor, say aye.